Can you go?
Alright, welcome to your village of Woodbury, Maine for September 8th, 2022. Will everyone please rise for the pledge allegiance and honor the silence for the victims of the nine-month attack on 21th of July this Sunday? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, so before we begin, I would like to start by introducing your village board. At the far end, coordinating everything today is village trustee Kristen Graziano. Trustee Vic Varelli is on special assignment rescuing his wife, so we will not lock him out absent an excuse. There we go. Next to CJ, two doors down is trustee Siriella. Next to her is deputy mayor Talavir. And next to me is village clerk Poppin. So we will get joined up into this by asking for public comments on agenda items only. So if anybody wishes to speak on items that are on the agenda at all. Once, twice, anybody virtually? Okay, moving right along. Alright, administrative business. Can I please have a motion in a second to accept the minutes of the meeting held on August 16th?
I'll make the motion. It's up to you.
I know.
My computer thinks this is music, so I don't know. Right now they weren't too thrilled as well, let's start that again.
Oh, I haven't. So it was, the motion was made by trustee Siriella, seconded by trustee Weaver. All in favor? Aye. And then Poppin, can you please read abstract six?
Abstract six contains vouchers 220430, 2250583, one voucher 220477, and totals $210,271.30.
Alright, do I have a motion to accept the abstract?
Thank you.
Pleasure. I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving along. Fire and property equipment requests. Can I please have a motion in second to approve fire and property equipment request 2022-24, totaling approximately $2,697.85 for the purchase of hose and nozzles. And the 2022-25 totaling approximately $3,000 for a laptop and PC for fit testing and ID database. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, moving along. We have an additional ID for this evening. Can I please have a motion in second to accept the resignation with regrets of Troy Shenn from the position of motor equipment operator effective September 23rd, 2022?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, hold business now. A change order for Ambar Park Equipment Project. So, can I please have a motion in second to approve change order one for the Ambar Park water system filter replacement and treatment plan upgrade, project totaling $0. Stop work improvement in the original contract is unchanged. The completion date is changed. So the final completion required under the old contract was August 9th. We are now changing that to, or amending that to final completion date in December 20th. So can I please have a motion and second to accept the changes as presented? Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I please have a motion? Alright, so amended resolution once again, the exemptions to the building moratorium. So can I please have a motion in second to adopt the resolution as presented, amending local law I 2022 moratorium as presented? These exemptions will be relative to the hardship waiver process.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we have a return of permit fee request for $7,000. So can I please have a motion in second to refund $1,400,000 totaling $1,850 building permit de paid by Moses Foster on behalf of Jacob Jewish? The applicant has decided not to move forward with the planned project. The amount of $370 is being kept for administrative costs and per associated with this application. This return of money will be contingent on removal of a temporary bridge, a temporary ramp I should say. So we don't want to mention the word bridge. So a temporary ramp, which Mike and Ella will have to keep on top of before the money can be released. So can I please have a motion in a second to approve that as read?
Motion.
Second, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we've been running along through business. Introductory local law eight of 2022 that Kelly Monde has entitled Building Construction. Countless nights, huh?
Yeah.
Can I please have a motion in seconds introduce local law eight of 2022, amending chapter 96 entitled Building Construction. It's relied for the administration and enforcement of the 2022 amendment in the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code. This law is required because the town estate has filed a notice of adoption of a rule repealing and replacing part 1203 of Title 19 of the New York State Code Rules and Regulations. So can I please have a motion in second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
There are no referrals or superaction required for this local law. So can I now have a motion in second to schedule a public hearing to be held on October 13th of 2022 at 7:30 PM? And to take a public comment on introductory local law eight of 2022. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There we go. Okay, liquor license notification for Bear Burger BD Woodbury LLC. So we received notice on August 4th that Bear Burger or Bear Burger slash BD Woodbury LLC located at 498 Red Apple Court, Suite F, C1 in Central Valley is applying for a liquor license from the New York Division of Alcohol Beverage Control State Woodbury. A letter was sent to the police department to determine if there was any reason why the village should object to this application being approved, and they stated there was no significant incidents to permit or inhibit the application. Therefore, village clerk Poppin can send a letter to state legal department stating the village in no way issues with this law. Okay, moving right along. Reletting of previously exempt properties. So can I please have a motion in second to adopt the following resolution as presented to the village of Proated Taxinam Du Quan Park East located at 22.48 foot alley that were previously exempt for the eligible for the exception?
You just added on Cody Jones Drive that I got MSHK or 14912?
Okay, I can look at that. So can I please have a motion in second to adopt the resolution as presented?
Make a motion, second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Move to a proposal, completion of soil warms. Can I please have a motion in second to approve the proposal from, proposal from and void the contract to Carmine Simpson and Associates totaling $6,310 to complete this soil, variance, catastrophe well twelve. This will determine the foundation design for the new P-Fas treatment building that will need to be constructed at this location. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And miraculously, this could be the shortest meeting, and I'm just jinxing myself.
Also, it's not jinxing.
Yeah, I'm just doing, I'm gonna do it anyway. I'm jinxing myself. Anyway, it's time for that moment of the meeting where I don't say it even there, but it's public comment. I haven't said it in a while until now. So I will stop with anybody virtually, which pretty much is getting on the side of the road. And I'm gonna call Chris Germer, MJ. MJ, do you have anything you want to speak up tonight? Moving right along. First row, go ahead. Introduce yourself and speak your mind.
Good evening, everybody. Rachel Bruce, resident of Pile and Mills. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I just wanted to quickly bring up something that came across, came to my attention this week. I've spoken with several residents in Brigadoon Development to have brought to my attention that there is an issue with temporary rentals, Airbnb's and so forth, that under village code are illegal. And even though I have to practice by saying I am a candidate for the town council and not the village, I'm not for the village board, however, I think it's you two of all of us to work together to ensure that we are advocating for our residents across both boards. So with that in mind, I want to bring it to the board's attention. I believe that it's already brought to your attention that I wanted to speak here as well, that we need to do something to stop these illegal, temporary rentals. There's possible cause to their existence between listings and also testimony, testimonies from residents of just coming and going, some different people who don't call their own home on a weekly basis, and this is something that I think should be brought to board's attention. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rachel. Okay, moving on to the second row. John, anything? Dara. Kathy, anything? Jimmy? Okay, go ahead. Now go to the podium, introduce yourself.
My name is Tivin Ink. I live in Brigadoon, and I'm just gonna reiterate what Rachel pointed out. It is, Brigadoon is one of the most beautiful areas in this community. I mean, without doubt. We came up here in March, and we're welcomed. It's the American dream. But what we have is, I believe out of 242 homes, it's eight to 12 that are being used as short-term rentals. Religious reasons, whatever it is, we don't care what it is, okay? It is just an Airbnb type of, you know what? I wanna know where my neighbors are. I wanna greet you, how you doing? Hey, Rachel, how's your day? I don't want four people, four different mini-bands across from me. One baby, four new ones. One of the homes down there, where Bill Sacks had seven mini-bands parked in that home. I have families running. They're basically listening privately, you know what? They're getting paid a good price, let me get out because I can't deal with this, okay? So since March, I'm telling you, easily 16 homes have been sold. And you know what? I worked with Vic on HOA, I felt like unless the cap comes down, something will stop. Because they're telling me violations, me, Zen, there's just nothing going on. Because that was talking about foreclosure three to five years from now? Or no, I may have to sell three to five years from now. I might want to go on three to five years from now. It's just not fair. That family's just one, and I need help. I mean, I was hoping more of the group of residents to show up. I understand it's busy, it's late, and I don't want, you know, I don't want, you know, jinx. I really do. I spoke at the police department, I spoke with everything. Rachel was great, she just walked up to me, I spoke with Brandon. I don't want to see you anymore.
Well, you came to the right place. It's probably where you first should come, was just to bring it to our attention, which by the way, Vic did. So it is an ongoing problem.
Yes.
Okay? And it's not just Brigadoon, the lady, we've got, we've had complaints from Country Crossing, I've had complaints from Highland Estates. Same issue, yes. So these are being, and I'm gonna tell you, it's across the board, the dislike of these Airbnb's. Because you have complete strangers that come in various weekends and then they're gone. And in the meantime, it's, whether it's parties or whatever's going on, it's an issue. Right now in our code, there's nothing listed for Airbnb's, which means it's not permitted. It wouldn't. But it is, right now what we're all looking into is the legality of us taking, putting in actual code where it says, these are not permitted. I know there are some municipalities that have taken these stands where, okay, we don't really want them, but what we'll do is we'll create a short-term rental law, and then that way they go through the planning board process, and they put out pink work, and there are these many people that are gonna be there for the weekend. I proposed that, I think, two years ago, but honestly, it was the right thing to not do, because it puts too much vermin on my building department to have something where it's approved, and then they've got an inspector and everything else like that. So the board is aware of your situation, our attorney is aware of the situation. I mean, we're all looking into the legalities of us not permitting them at all. And it is, talking with our attorney about it, it is like a hot, black issue all over New York State.
Yes.
So we are proceeding, it's not even just the houses, we're worried about the pools that are being rented out.
Yes.
Because the pool shit's through an apple swimming. So we are looking to address all of that. We just need a little bit of time, because we're just making sure that we're not gonna be needing any litigation from there. And what our legal rights are actually just saying, hey, listen, we're not permitting this. So Kelly, I don't know if you have anything you want to add?
I think you summed it up very well. I mean, we have to look at, this is a very hot topic throughout the state, and definitely for our town, it's something everybody's dealing with. So we're had us people get to that part. And that's where we are. I have to get back to some of the questions that had previously been posed. We can go over there, but we figured that out first. We can put together a lot.
Yeah, I know, I know. So we're on it.
See, my concern is, and I'm being self-reality, I got two little kids. My wife is familiar with this area, and it was like, Monroe Woodbury was like up there in school. So Rachel was telling you, you guys are one, two, or three. We all know what the numbers are. And I spoke into somebody who works in the school system, and they're worrying about, and he's turning it in motion, okay? Teachers that were teaching you, again, it's disgusting. They're not ready to deal with whatever. So between what's going on here, just what's coming in, the rental problems, the families that we want here are moving out. Okay? They're gonna make me an offer, and you know what? I'm at that now. Because, you know, we're in all these groups, and people are just like, you know what? The board doesn't do anything, the HOA doesn't do anything, and it's just, again, they, it's always funny playing, and you know, I'm gonna go back to my neighbors, like, where are you guys? I need 240 of you guys here.
You really, you really don't.
I'll try.
You're, I believe me, I don't need 240 people, but what you're saying, we are here. Okay, because we, listen, we heard it from, like I told you, we heard it from people in Country Crossing.
Oh, it happened, I mean, listening, I mean, listening to all of that.
I think, I have a different point of view on it, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, kind of like the states, we have them there, and initially, one of our building inspectors was chasing them around, because initially they were keeping the addresses on the website. Now they got smarter, and they're taking the addresses down.
Correct.
So now we have to basically sit there and figure out, okay, is that that home there? And then go from there. It is just hard to enforce. We took, we took the first step by having a, or hiring a building inspector, or the week, possibly for various weekends. So that was part of our thinking with that, was to address that concern and make construction concerns on weekends and whatnot. So we, we took that step. Now we're just having our attorney look into the legality of the law. What I can do is I can also reach out to all state representatives, because they are working in other municipalities as well, and representing, you know, municipalities who are Rockland and Orange, and see if we're also, because I'm, I can assure you, we're not the only municipality.
But you know what? It's, you know, all of us here, basically I was told that, you know what, our higher up officials are not gonna be able to do anything, because they know where their financial score.
Who told you that?
I've heard it.
Who told you that?
Okay, so if I can't get, if I can't get it done here at this level, you know what? The governments aren't coming down, you know, or just the higher official, the senators are not gonna take it down.
When we look, when we look forward from our elected officials that are in state levels of partnership, it's us working with them. If they have to create state laws or what they have to do on errand, on our end, once again, we're reviewing it, we're reviewing it with our attorney. I promise you, we're not gonna dump the issue. You won't have to, you won't have to move, you won't have, and you'd be, you'd be saying, hey, listen, that village board, they get things done. So that, and I want you here saying that out loud. So, but we are working on it, it is an issue that does, doesn't affect Brigadoon, it's all over.
Thank you very much.
No, Jimmy, thank you for coming down. Okay, next up.
Maria Hunter. Couple things. As you stated before, Mr. Mayor, Gary Thomas-Gurber was very helpful at the time with these Airbnb's, because he did have the addresses. And I would, if you know where some of these homes are, they kind of pinpoint where they were, and he was very instrumental in getting some of them removed. And that I'm very grateful, because they tried to use my pond to go swimming one time. Yes. On another thing, it's also a safety issue, these Airbnb's and also it's somewhat better practice, there's codes that have to be followed and safety issues. If you're down in the basement and there's no exit, you know, to get out, you're not gonna do something. It's really putting the village residents and the town residents at risk. So I appreciate what everyone is doing with getting that law with the swimming, compared to that, that's one, and the Airbnb's. It's very important that we keep safe in Woodbury. I have a couple thank yous. Whoever did the sidewalk cleaning from the firehouse south, all the way down to Rosemont, I don't know who did it, whether it was the town, the highway, or the mayor went out himself personally and hid the weed lacquer. I want to thank you for making sure the sidewalks were all cleared out, because I didn't approach it.
I actually think it was building grounds, we didn't do anything right.
So whoever it was, I want to say thank you for getting that done, and I appreciate it, because it was starting to look horrible in Woodbury. So I want to thank you for getting that taken care of. Also, with the highway department, Rob, Rob and his men do so much for the beautification committee. I always say thank you to him for that. Also, Rob's department last year, and his name is on the plaque for the pool, they did a huge job for us, for the town to get that pool put together. And people don't realize the work that was put in as residents from the highway department, working in conjunction with the buildings and grounds from the town. So Rob, thank you to you and your men. The building department, I also want to thank Mike. I've give, I've thrown a couple things at him, they've been slowly being taken care of. So to those of the building, sorry, John. That's all I, you know, but thank you to everyone who's been doing things to make sure that Woodbury as a whole don't have cars, apartments, long 32, no license plates for sale, and be cleaning up some of the businesses that are owned by non-residents. So thank you to everyone for pitching in.
Thank you, Maury. The two people that opened, like, anything you want to talk about tonight?
Do you want me to play, I'm from Monroe, you know, right?
I, I do. And you have anything you want to add tonight, or you?
Maybe a public ground question, or?
No, yeah, I just want to see if you have anything you want to say.
One was a sad sad who lives in Monroe, who can watch my real town game.
Oh, Dave.
It is so nice and pleasant, you guys smile and, you know, answer questions all the time, and don't run from me when I'm in the room.
You see that?
Who is she?
Introduce yourself, go to the podium, introduce yourself.
I think I heard, I know that, so Facebook. So you can do the Facebook. Yeah, so, who am I? I don't know. My name's Maureen Richardson.
Maureen?
I'm Richardson.
Richardson.
I was born in Monroe, on the wrong side of this Monroe Woodbury, clearly, this is the best side.
Thank you, everyone, everybody's always saying.
I was accidentally thrust into, like, municipal issues when my town decided that they were gonna get involved Neo Gold's proposal for some preserved parkland that was actually deemed a preserved path of recreation, that they were trying to lease to Neo Gold for a dinosaur theme. He didn't like that in Monroe. Well, the town board doesn't realize this, but they don't seem to represent the majority of people who live in Monroe, who are more akin to like the 70s hippie feel of the Lake House community that was originally there. And they were very angry. A lot of environmentalists on both sides there actually are very angry, and it was 1,000 people who signed my change out order petition, and I think 200 people went up to town hall, so that's why I was laughing at that comment earlier, because you really know a lot, 200 people.
Listen, we've had, we've had almost 100 people between virtual and in here.
No, they were all in the town hall, and the state police were also there. And so we won, we scared Neo Gold away, if you want to say that. And we were happy. Now we've got to work on really cementing that preserved parkland. It was gonna bring like 300,000 people up through the building pyramid and buy my house, and I just said absolutely not. And now, you know, since then, they're trying to put up 491 unit development by my friend Carol Hoxhurst, her grandfather, the road was named after him, because he built the first house of the utilities. He built that house by hand, it's made out of stone. And they were just gonna have 53-foot-high apartment buildings that were the size of, it was 700 feet, which is width of two football fields, so it's gathered, it's one building. The other one was 300 feet wide, which is another football field. Just towering, like 53-foot high, it was on average, the highest they could have got was like 600 feet on one side and 45 on the other. Just gonna be towering over their, their small little, it was, it's zoned currently residential for a rural 1 acre, and they were trying to pile all this density on basically 50 acres and preserve 65% of it using CCR, like Cluster Conservation zoning. But there's a lot of flaws in our code, and I basically just came because Monroe's currently taking a look at our tree preservation code and seemingly trying to make it more lenient. And that's, I've had a conversation with you, and I was like, that's a bad one.
Yep.
And I know some of, you know, work.
We met at the SCUBIS, it was his town hall, we met at Javi Jones'.
Yes. So he was originally part, I think, of drought community original code, and he's not happy, so we're gonna work on this as long as the issue's open, and maybe you guys could tell me more about the protections that you guys have in place for this kind of thing, and I could request any thousand people who are in the group that I started with Carol Hoxhurst called Preserve Monroe now can all request of the town board that we do something different with the trees. That's basically it.
Well, I would suggest you just look over our minutes, our meetings at all online. You can see, I think, since the three of us have been on the board, how active we have been just typing up the code, just being proactive. I think this board has taken stance, especially with CJ and Tara, they talked about it during their campaign, about preserving all that space, reviewing the comprehensive plan, and so on and so forth. And those were campaign promises made, and they were campaign promises kept. So it's a very like-minded board in that respect. You can't really, if you're zoned specifically for something, you can't stop the project from going forward if it's zoned specifically for that. But Woodbury is now facing a bigger But Woodbury is now facing a bigger dilemma, because we allow all this growth and we never invest in the infrastructure.
Yeah. Well, that's the other issue, is like, we have examples of this all around us in Monroe.
But you have a water issue, like.
We do, so. But that's the thing, it's like, look before you leap, is what we're all trying to say, is like, look at, you know, Rockland and Kingston. All these towns are having similar problems, where they developed and then they're like, oops, the infrastructure's not there. And I'm like, if we do this, the infrastructure's not there, it's already all drained. So, that amount of density, and the zone has not landed yet, so we're fighting that. But just the fact that, you know, a lot of issues that protect, like with the ash floors and the, like, spotted lantern flies and like, the gypsy moths, having eliminated the ash trees, the elm trees, like all throughout, and I think that actually been eliminated basically from here to Oregon. And so, it's not a great idea to start taking trees in my blood. So, yeah, that's what I'm.
You know what you need to do. I think you know what you need to do.
No. You've done it.
You've done, you've done it, you've done the beginning work and you just need to keep working strong and building an army of people that are working with you.
I need to know what to ask for with the trees. They've opened the issue.
Okay, did, did you send me a message today about the tree, the tree law?
Yeah, it was a couple days ago.
Okay. Don't mind me.
You're just busy making it.
So, we have put the place tree law, I think, two years ago, correct? I just don't remember, I haven't looked it up, code.
It's on there, okay.
Yeah, it, it's there. We put it in there to hopefully save the older trees.
Yeah.
That would be cut down during the drought. And I just can't remember much about it, two years ago. Chris Gerber, how many, when did we put the tree law in place?
Seven? Something. I don't know.
Yeah, maybe, it's, I'll find out for you, Chris.
Yeah.
Oh, actually, you, you're, is this woman here? So, she can't have any question or answer. So, I will ask her something, you mean approximation?
Right.
Nope, it can't be the approximation, it's like, then she'll spend 20 minutes.
She's researching right now.
Oh, yeah, she absolutely is.
It was called the tree law.
It was called the tree. Because Kelly, you know, Kelly here spends countless nights thinking of, we're not gonna name her.
I can't, Kelly would be like, I don't hear her, it's been a while. Trees.
Tree law? That sounds right. You've done stuff on virtual elevation, you've done stuff on the architecture, on the review boards, the order, the water protection, order protection, all of ours.
I have a virtual conservation commission.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to make me a package. I'm really disadvantaged over there, I have to bring a lot of information back.
Well, I would, I would look at the last two years. I think you guys came on 2020.
Yeah.
So, go for 2020 minutes and just scroll through. And then you will be able to find those local laws online.
There's a lot that are called zoning dividends.
Yeah. And look at those too.
But our code book is online as well, and as well as code books for pretty much the entire state.
Okay.
As well as other states. And General Code, which is the company we use for our code book, which is one of those companies who's a kind of store force. You can access all kinds of different code books through the video website.
Right. You're welcome, we're scared of Neo Gold.
Yes, thank you very much. Anybody else in the public, Kathy, no, you good?
Good.
Okay. Any answers in our heads? Starting with Nikki Phillips.
Nothing.
Nothing at all.
2008.
No, we, we just did something with it a couple of years ago. Yeah, we did it again.
Okay, keep going.
Okay. Mike Cannella.
Nothing at this time, sir, thank you.
Yeah, you did hear about the contingency for the ramp at Seven Peasant?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, Rob Wine.
I don't have anything to add.
There you go. Okay. Moving right along. Board comments, starting at the end. The man balancing three different computers in front of him.
Now, I'm just gonna go with the past, but I hadn't, I mean, I didn't think profoundly to say this evening.
You're passing?
You're passing?
Yes.
Wow, so surreal.
Woo, first time.
You feel it, okay, Chris? For those who are new to either of you, CJ is usually a three paragraphs.
Three, three pages.
I was eating nine, I was saying on average, it's usually a three body paragraph.
Three pages.
Board comments. Today, it is a plus stuff by not saying more. Sue?
I would like to talk about something that a community event over in Monroe side that's happening on Saturday from 11/7, which is the cheese festival. I was included in the meeting last night, because I'm representing Monroe Woodbury Music Boosters there with a bunch of other people. And I think it's a great event for everybody. They have a lot of, there's like food trucks, beer, wine, there'll be lots of cheese. At live music, they have various bands playing in one section down by Lake Street. And in the kid's zone, which is by Love Bites, they're gonna have individual students and people saying, performing on a stage. They also have a kid's zone, which is totally free. And they have water balloons, face painting, sand art. They have free bounty houses. Monroe Woodbury Athletic Booster will be there, God's Grace Ministry, which is down in Highland Mill, down in Central Valley, will be there. And I think it's something worth checking out, just be a beautiful day. Get out, enjoy, before the cold comes. Come say hi to me, I'm down by Love, near by Love Bites.
There used to not be cheese in the cheese festival.
There used to be that, cheese, the first one I went here, I went to the cheese festival and I was like, where's the cheese?
I said, oh, I never went there.
But now there's cheese.
Yeah, now there's cheese.
There's even a cheese passport, and when you get it stamped, and you try the different cheeses, you get a ticket, if you get it all filled out, and then you get entry to win a trip to bars, so.
She has statues, they can bar, they have these.
There's also a cheesecake contest.
This is.
A cheesecake tasting contest.
The clerk here, she is just a fabulous ideas, that one. She was the one that.
I figured out that's a statue.
Statue, but you're a fabulous guy, you just, they just fly out of you.
I'm a statue. I'm a statue. What a therapist, that's pretty old, like 18 years ago. Everyone, everyone I hear, I know.
Trustee Birick. They've been married to.
The Monroe lady in the back.
Maureen.
Maureen, what's your name, sorry?
Maureen.
Oh, Maureen. They, the county planning group has really great group, called the Climate Smart Community. It's a land use and open space task force run by Keet Schmidt. And we have gotten a lot of ideas from her. We have several members of the village of Woodbury who are members of the task force. And it's been a plethora of information. A lot of the laws we have passed, a lot of the resolutions we have passed, improved, have been a result of us attending meetings, I'm telling you. You'll get things that you didn't even know were possible with very simple truck down comments and having boards aligned. So, I don't know if you have any support, the village level, or?
No, I'm in the town, I have a thousand supporters for Reserve Monroe. And I don't, I don't board, you know, they want to do what people want, if they're allowed it. So, we're gonna give it to them.
I mean, check the numbers, I mean, that's what I would tell you, but you know, I mean, we have to be very environmentally friendly and conscious, only because I remember when I first moved to Woodbury, right, for a group of Republicans, you wouldn't think that. But when I moved to Woodbury for the first time, I was like, this is a great rural community, I'm from the city, blah, blah. And all these giant things were approved, I'm like, wait, no, 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 no. So, that's part of the reason why I wanted to be up here, is because I didn't like certain things that I saw and I felt it was time to go the other way and preserve what was left. And before, it was too late. And that's how I met Rachel, and we share a passion, we see CJ as well. So, I think that don't, it's hope, because board might not be aligned today. But maybe with, with a little bit of you showing up and speaking your life every meeting they have. But I will tell you, that's just, that is one of the avenues we've used to get information and to educate, and also myself, I didn't know everything that was out there. I actually attended a couple of meetings, they had webinars, and I thought it was very useful. And I'm happy to speak to you offline, like, all.
Just like to repeat, it's Keet Schmidt, I think, that works out.
Oh, plant, she's from, it's the Climate Smart Community, land use and open space task force.
Maybe I will say something. The best way, if you wanna make a difference, the best way to make a difference, you gotta roll.
But you went to a thousand people, you tell them.
That's a true.
I said that to you only when we met at Stu's office. Wow, what Tara was saying, that's what's up, the town had the town hall meeting. Because that was what inspired me to run for the ZBAM, is that I had a development going on behind me and I'm like, what?
What's the, what's the process? You don't even know the process, you're not educated, you're not educating yourself. You're like, why would you do that?
Yes.
And you start asking a lot of questions.
You learn a lot.
You do.
And then you realize the thought process wasn't sound to get there in the public's eyes. So, then you learn a lot. Things are questioned more.
Yeah. Well, then everything's questioned. And then that's when you say, okay, what's like, do I stand up and do it for them? Right? So, it's nice to organize a community, I think that's a great first step, but I mean, that's what I wanted to say, I don't really have anything else publicly other than, I'm glad we have like a lot of people on the other side of our beautiful community. And I hope to see everybody at the September 11th memorial, at 7:00, by the firehouse around the corner. It's always really respectful and heartfelt ceremony. And every year, I know I am brought to here, so I just hope that the community shows up for honor our fallen heroes from that day, 2000 years ago. So, thank you, talk again.
CJ, did you have anything else to add? No, no. That's right.
So, there's a lecture coming up. There's a couple lawyers who know best too, but next week, here in this building, Tuesday, Tuesday, September 13th, from noon to 9:00 p.m., every resident of the village, which means not people inherent in Woodbury, but every resident of the village in Woodbury, they vote on three topics. But we do have, we will have a sample ballot posted, we can't go to a sample ballot online because that has technical advances, counties, for companies, and hospitals, they pass a money when it's a three proposition, they were in the newspaper, they are on the website, I believe that on the news wire. So, please go down and vote, you know, make your voice be heard. And I say the week, one morning.
To refresh everybody's memory, what the three ballot propositions are.
Yeah. I was, I don't know, I thought one of you, but I kind of liked.
Bye.
Okay, so.
I'm, I'm, yeah, but it doesn't matter, but.
Okay.
So, we have three, we have three ballot propositions on there. First one is term limits for zoning and planning for our members. So, more details are online on that, we're looking to create tenure terms for them for zoning and planning board members. The second item is a tax credit to members of our volunteer fire departments. $500 was the maximum we've been looking for in their village taxes. John, we did look into the ambulance board, we are still working on it, because it's private. So, it's, it's always tricky. And the third thing we are looking to do is increase the LOSAP, which is basically the retirement plan for our firefighters, our volunteer firefighters. So, all three measures, it'll be hammering ballots here at village hall. Actually, well, we are basically, yes. So, yes, Maria, we want you here, hours on end, why are you sprinting, why that? But please come out and vote for this. This is, have we ever done this in the village?
Yeah. Oh, yes.
Okay. There you go, I thought it was being unique here.
I'm a marketer.
All right. I don't have much to add tonight. I do wanna thank Joey Chiantero and Bobby Blair and crew from the town of Woodbury Building and Grounds, who prior to this 9/11 ceremony came in over the last two days and had been painting and trucking the main hallway down there to look a bit more presentable for their ceremony on that day. They, the firefighters have gone out, they've got the better PA system, so there should not be any problems here in the hallway that day, that have been a problem you cast. So, they do a great job every year with it. And it's, it's a beautiful way to remember those who are no longer with us and who we continue to lose through the airborne boys, the airborne toxins that were here and there. So, please come out. I don't have much else to add. I want to thank you all for coming tonight. And that's pretty much it. With no further business to discuss, I will accept the motion as second to adjourn the meeting.
Motion, second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, our next scheduled meeting is going to be held on September 22nd. All right? It's pasta night, so please bring a dish of pasta with you.
No, it's not. Ignore him.[1784.84]